And it's now four o'clock, Mayor.
I would like to welcome everyone to the July 27, 2020 Special City Council Meeting. It is six o'clock. Ms. McGee, will you call a roll, please?
You mean four o'clock?
Four o'clock.
Four o'clock.
Mayor Bill Hastings.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Chris Harris.
Here.
Councilmember Frank Carroll.
Here.
Councilmember Janet Court.
Here.
Councilmember Dur-
Here.
Councilmember Jennifer Jordan Stockdick.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you, ma'am. Our U.S. pledge and our pledge to Texas flag will be given by Mayor Pro Tem Chris Harris. First, we will have Associate Pastor Marcus Evans with the Community, Katy Community Fellowship Church will lead us in an invocation.
Thank you, Mayor.
Evans?
Yes, everybody hear me?
Mm-hmm.
Awesome. Let's pray. Father, thank you so much for today. This is a day that you've made. We're going to rejoice and be happy today. Father, thank you for these men and women that you have put in authority over us. And as we're told to do in your word, we're going to pray for them, and we thank you for them. Lord, thank you for Mayor Hastings and for Chris Harris, Jennifer Stockdick, Janet Cortez, and Frank Carroll, Duran Dowdell. Lord, help them, I pray. Encourage them and strengthen them. Father, thank you for them, for their families. Father, please give them wisdom, Lord, that's beyond themselves. Help them, Father, as they lead us. And we thank you, and we trust you. Give them encouragement tonight, I pray. Father, guide them as they lead us through all the workings and regular things of the city and through our COVID crisis and through everything, Father, that is coming across their meeting this evening. We praise you for them. We trust you. We thank you. We want you. In Jesus' name. Amen. Amen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem Harris, would you?
All right, the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The Texas Pledge. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and individual.
Thank you. And Pastor Evans, thank you so much for being here with us this evening.
Thank you so much. I appreciate the invitation. It's an honor. Goodbye, everyone.
Thanks, Marcus.
Thank you.
We will move on to item number three, public comments. I'd like to remain, or remind the audience that they will have three minutes to speak on any item not on the agenda, and the city council cannot respond. If there's anyone wishing to participate via teleconference and you would like to speak, please press star nine to raise your hand. And I'd like to remind everyone, if you do wish to speak, please state your name and your address.
I see no hands and no discussion in the chat window at this time, Mayor.
All right. Having no comments, we will move on to item number four, which is comments from the public on any agenda on, or any item on the agenda. And if, once again, if there's anyone wishing to participate via teleconference, please press star nine to raise your hand. And once again, we ask that you give your name and your address.
Seeing none, Mayor.
All right, we will move on to item number five. And tonight, we have two different things to honor. The first one will be the Ark of Katy. This is their 30th anniversary. So through Office of the Mayor, City of Katy, Texas, in observance of the 30th anniversary of the Ark of Katy. Whereas since August the 2nd, 1990, the Ark of Katy has provided opportunities for individuals with developmental and intellectual disabilities, IBD. And whereas for 30 years, the Ark of Katy has served individuals with development, developmental, intellectual disabilities and their families providing social, educational, recreational, and community-based activities. For the past 15 years, they have provided a year-round adult activity care program and summer programs for not only adolescents, but for the continued education of those with IBD on into adulthood. And whereas the Ark of Katy is working to expand programs and services to offer other opportunities for more youth and adults with IBD, such as autism and Down syndrome, enabling them to achieve and enjoy their full potential. Now therefore, I, Bill Hastings, Mayor, do hereby call upon all of the citizens to honor and recognize the Ark of Katy and applaud the efforts of the Ark of Katy and all persons participating in their programs and to thank them for providing an environment which enables those with IBD to be included and respected and active members of the community throughout their lifetime. The Ark of Katy provides education and enrichment to the lives of so many, and we are honored to have an organization like the Ark of Katy invest its time and efforts in our community. In witness whereof, I am here unto set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Katy to be affixed this 27th day of July, 2020. Sign, Bill Hastings, Mayor. The second one tonight is Relay for Life. Office of the Mayor, City of Katy, Texas. Whereas the Relay for Life is a fun-filled community event that mobilizes communities throughout the country to celebrate cancer survivors and caregivers and to remember those who have lost their battle against this disease. And whereas the 2020 theme for the Relay of Life of Katy is, "You Cannot Cancel Hope." And whereas by working together, Relay for Life will provide crucial information through its helpline, cancer.org, and advocate for the critical health care legislation and continue to give hope with everything they do because cancer won't stop, and neither will they. And whereas money raised during Relay for Life helps the American Cancer Society save lives and create more birthdays by helping individuals stay well, get well, find cures, and fight back. And whereas the Relay for Life, Relay of Life of Katy, on July 31st, 2020, from 8:00 p.m. to 9:30 p.m., will have a drive-by parade down Luminary Lane at the 5600 block of Fourth Street between Avenue A and Avenue B, Katy, Texas. Relay for Life asks that you stay in your vehicle as you drive by Luminary's in honor of and to celebrate survivors and caregivers. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Bill Hastings, as Mayor, and on behalf of Katy City Council, do hereby proclaim July the 31st, 2020, as Relay for Life Day in the City of Katy and urge all citizens to work together. Relay for Life is all about togetherness, and even though we can't currently be face-to-face, we will continue fighting cancer head-on as one supportive community. In witness hereof, I hereunto set my hand, cause the seal of the City of Katy to be affixed this 27th day of July, 2020. Sign, Bill Hastings, Mayor. And we will move on to item number six. Physical Year 2020 Monthly Report and Bank Statement Summary and Check Register through June 30th, 2020, and these are information items only. Moving on to the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
Motion. Second.
Motion second. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to item number eight, Consider Approval of Final Flat. Item 8A, Griffin Lots Subdivision of 1.0131 acres, zeros of reserves, one block and two lots in the Anna M. Williams Survey Abstract, 1540, Harris County. This was denied by City Planning and Zoning Commission 716 of 2020. Recommendation is to deny pending corrections. Do I have a motion either to approve or deny?
Move to deny pending the corrections.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
I, I do, Mayor. Art, I understand that this is really a result of some laws in the, having to do with plating. Could you explain that process to us?
I'm sorry, who did you address? I couldn't understand your question.
I asked Art if he could. I, that I understood this was a result of some changes to the rules concerning plating, and I was asking Art if he could explain that process to us.
Anas.
Art, looks like you're on mute. If you can unclick. Art, are you on? Janet, while he's trying to get on, I will answer your question. That is correct. Because of the new plating laws, we have to make the motions the way that the planning commission did.
Okay. He just reconnected to audio. Art, if you unmute, it looks like you're reconnected.
I think he's still having trouble.
It shows he's unmuted at this time. It appears it's trying to reconnect again.
Okay.
Can anybody else state to us what the new law is?
Yes, so we have to be able to take action for plots within 30 days. And to protect ourselves, they put deny pending the corrections. So soon as all the corrections have been made, they're able to move forward with the recordation process. So as a city, as the planning commission, as city council, you have to be able to take action within 30 days of of the applicant submitting their, their plot. So this keeps them going through the process and making sure that we're, we're protected when we, when we, when we approve plots.
And what agency or whatever it was made the rule changes?
The state legislation.
Okay.
No, one more time. Go, go, explain how it protects the city.
So if, if you deny pending corrections, then they have to make all the corrections before, before they're able to record it. If you just went ahead and approved it, then it was approved at the time that they submitted it.
Okay, so is the correction that you're wanting them to make the retention ponds?
To, no, they already have an existing detention pond. What we're asking them to do is to provide us with the documents creating the HOA that will maintain that detention pond. They have not done that yet.
And so why are we requiring an HOA on a half-an-acre lot with two houses?
That's because it has a detention pond, and we want to make sure the city is not responsible for maintaining that detention pond in case it fails.
Have we ever required this on anybody else's property?
We've never had a situation like this, and this is not your average lot. This is the smallest one. There's 14,000 square feet. Our average is 8,625, so it is a little bit unique. It's not your, your typical subdivision.
So can you explain to me again why, so you're, what I'm understanding is we're warning an HOA so that we can tell them, keep up with them maintaining their property? Is that correct?
Correct. When, when the city engineer reviewed these plans, he made the recommendation to have a detention pond and an easement for both of those lots. Because of that, we want to make sure that the, the city, one, and the other residents there are not having to maintain that detention pond. So they, they are having to create an HOA that will be responsible for, for the maintenance and ownership of that, that detention pond.
Anas, isn't that HOA going, they're, they're going to divide that one acre lot to two lots, correct? And then-
The current owner, the current owner is, the current owner is-
Right, the current owner's going to divide the lot.
Correct.
Okay, and then when he sells those two lots, both lots will be part of the HOA?
Yes.
Isn't it kind of unusual to have such a small HOA?
It is, but I believe we already have one now. I think there's one where the Bush Estates are on 10th Street and I forget that, that cross street there, where the, the perimeter fence is.
It's not as unusual as you'd think.
That's home temp.
And, and Anas, this is to keep us from getting into a situation we have in another neighborhood where the, someone's not keeping up with the detention pond, and it keeps falling back to the city. So it's protecting the entire neighborhood plus the city itself, correct?
Yes, sir. And it's just for those two, just for those two lots.
So, Anas, as far as the detention pond that we're asking them to do, do we, have we done a study to see how the water's actually flowing on that property?
Yes, David has looked at their plans.
Okay, I just didn't see it in our stuff. I just, so you said there's already a detention pond. Is there already one that's going to be on each separate property as it gets divided? Or-
Let me, let me put my map up.
It's one pond. Art, are you back?
One of the things we're looking at is, we don't want to repeat errors of the past. And like, like Councilman Harris mentioned, there are places in the city that would have had detention that would have served, but it wasn't properly done, and now we're left with something that's overgrown and doesn't serve the purpose of what it's intended to do. This way, you have it legally, and it protects the city, also protects all the rest of the neighborhood.
Yes, so can everyone see my, my map?
Yes.
So this is Griffin, and this is the property right now. The developer or the current property owner will split it in half. They will put a cul-de-sac, giving it access to both. The detention pond location is on this lot right here. And the arrows show you where the water or how it will drain. So it goes into the cul-de-sac, into the detention pond, and then into this, this area here where it goes to Carson and eventually Pat. And this was all reviewed by the city engineer. So this is, this is what we are trying to make sure doesn't become an issue. So it's, it will be handled by the HOA.
We now have-
Yes, I'm on, I'm on now. I'm on my phone. My, my, my Wi-Fi kept dropping. Yes, but the, what, the reason why we have to have them do a, a homeless association is because that way they don't have to do two detention ponds. You develop one detention pond, you can develop that lot with, with one detention pond built by, by joint owners on it to take care of that, so that you don't have to build two, two detention ponds and thereby end up making the lot unbuildable. But the, the detention ponds must meet our, our standards that we adopted, the Harris County Flood Control Standards. They must meet all the, all the requirements that, that any type of drainage that would be required for those, for those tracks. If they were built individually, they would have to meet that, and being built together, they have to meet, meet those requirements for, because they're both draining to the same pond.
So Art, what would stop the HOA from dissolving itself in a year or so or two months?
No, no, they don't. That's why, that's why they have to file that as, as a matter of record. Those are recorded. We review them to make them set up like they are, a HOA, and then it, for us, it's easier for us to enforce it against an HOA, which is an entity, rather than the individuals. When you got the individuals, you got issues dealing with, dealing with homesteaded property and those issues. When it's, when it's a HOA, we can go in there. If they're not cleaning it, we can go in and we can go against that entity to make sure that it gets cleaned, make sure it gets dug up, dug out, and those type of things. So but apart from the city, it's a lot easier for us to deal with that. For the homeowners, it may not be, because they end up having to pay more money, but for us, it's easier for us to regulate them as, as an HOA than as individuals.
Well, and who's, is the city the one that's going to set that amount on what the HOA fee is? Or is it-
No, no, they do. They do. They set, they set that fee just like any, any HOA. It, it's no different than Wood Creek or, or any of the other entities out there. The homeowner association, they, they set the maintenance fee, they do all that. That's part of what they pay in their, in their yearly maintenance fee.
And only those two lots are going, going to drain into ten detention pond?
Correct. And, and then those two lots, it's set up where those, those two lots, then they drain. And when they drain into, into the ditch, wherever they're supposed to drain, they can only drain at the, at the rate that's allowable, that's set by, by our, our regulations, Harris County Flood Control Regulation.
Hey, Art, so what happens if they come together and they come up with this fee, and let's say it's $500? What happens when they figure out that they don't have enough money to properly maintain their property? How does the city then get involved with that?
What, what we do, just like we've done in, in some of the other commercial, commercials, we end up filing suit against, against the HOA, and we, we force them to comply, and on some of that, we can, we can even, we can even take over and assess them as, as nuisances on that property.
Okay.
And then, then, so, so it creates some, it's going, we can, it's for us to be able to shut them down that way as a HOA, we can, and then they no longer have drainage. Whereas when it's an individual homeowner there, it's harder for us to do that because that homeowner just says, "Well, I can't, I can't do it. I can't provide for this." Well, we have this separate entity there that can only operate in accordance with those, and, and if we shut them down, they, they're shut down, and those homeowners got to find something else to do.
Okay, thank you.
I, I'm happy. We worked really hard, Mr. Mayor. We worked really hard on having new drainage standards, so I'm glad we're following through and before we develop areas, instead of having to go back in the, and try to fix things, we're actually trying to get ahead of the game and improve drainage. So I'm, I'm happy with this.
Is there any further discussion? Having none, we'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same side. Motion carries. Moving on to 8B. 5.556 acres, four reserves, one block and zero lots in H+TC Railroad Company Survey Abstract 170 and the WW Bane Survey Abstract 85, Waller County. This was denied by City Planning and Zoning Commission on 716 of 2020, pending corrections. And the side note is that all city engineers' recommendations have been corrected. Do I have a motion to approve or deny?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion?
And to the city planner, I'm, I'm reading this right. We're, we're requiring seven acres of drainage on their property, and that's been checked and approved?
Correct.
Okay, and that's being paid by the developer?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? Having none, we'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same side. Motion carries. Moving on to item number nine. 9A, Rysland Terrace, Consider Resolution. Awarding the Patent Improvements Bid Contract to Fused Industries LLC, Houston, Texas, in the amount of $3,777,954. Total project cost is $4,281,54. Bids were received on June 30th, and these this does not include contingencies as posted on the agenda. There was some last-minute adjustments and due to the available budget for the project. Do I have a motion?
Motion. Second.
Motion and a second. Is there any discussion? No discussion. We'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side. Motion carries. 9A to Consider Resolution Authorizing Mayor to Sign a Revision of Contract Number 19-076-021012-B361 with the Texas General Land Office, the GLO, for construction on a drainage channel in the Rysland Terrace subdivision.
Second.
Motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Real quick on this one. To the city planner, this is phase two, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and I know he's not going to take any credit for it, but thank you, Mayor Hastings. I was a witness. This was one project that was really needing to be pushed through to stay on schedule and thank the mayor's office and city staff for getting this one pushed through. I know it was a lot of work.
Thank you, Chris. Is there any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say.
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side. 9A3, Consider Resolution Authorizing the Mayor to Sign a Proposal with Costello Engineering and Surveying for Professional Engineering Survey Services for the Drainage Channel Reconstruction Improvements for the existing channel downstream of Rysland Terrace subdivision. City of Katy, Texas. This is job number 2020-020. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
And do we have a timeframe? I know we've been telling the residents we're going to start this in August. Are we still on track here?
This is this is Rockford Costello. Councilman, the GLO expiration of this contract is September of 2021. We'll start as soon as we can. I do know the, the consultant assisting with the GLO contractual obligations requires an environmental study upfront, and they're working on that right now. But as soon as that's cleared up, Costello will get started as soon as we can. Our anticipations are, are bidding and starting construction on or about February to March of next year. If not sooner. If not sooner.
Okay, now that now, when we were talking about what's starting in August, though, we're talking about the patent side, correct?
That's correct. Patent is starting right away. This is the second phase. It would start a little bit later because of the environmental study.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same side. Motion carries. Nine B, Consider Resolution, Authorizing the Mayor to Accept and Minutary Easement Agreement between Centerpoint Energy Houston Electric LLC and the City of Katy, Katy Boardwalk. Resolution number 01044.
Motion.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. Moving on to nine C. Consider Resolution, Authorizing the Mayor to Sign an Acknowledgement with Change Healthcare Technology Enabled Services LLC for Enrollment in the National Payment Connector System to Provide Certain Billing and Coding Services. And this is in reference to fire department billing. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Having no discussion, all in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same side. Motion carries. Item number 10. Consider An Ordinance Consent to the Creation of the Village of Katy Development District. Ms. McGrew, can you read that caption for us, please?
Yes, sir. An ordinance of the City of Katy, Texas consenting to the creation of the Village at Katy Development District, formerly known as the Katy Town Center Development District, a municipal utility district within the boundaries of the City of Katy, Texas, ratifying all actions taken by the city and on behalf of the city that were taken in the creation of the Village at the Katy Development District, repealing all ordinances or part of ordinances in conflict herewith, providing for severability and providing an effective date.
Motion.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? No discussion, we'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same side. Motion carries. Item number 11. At this time, we will have an executive session as authorized by Chapter 551 Texas Government Code, Section 551.071. Consultation with Attorney Regarding Pending Litigation, Attorney Client Privilege Information in Section 551.72, Purchase, Exchange, or Lease of Value, Any Real Property on Patent Drive. And we will go into executive session at 4:33.
Is everybody here?
Looks like you got everybody but Art.
I have a quick question, number two, never mind, I just, never mind, I just saw it.
Becky, is Art still not on?
I'm still not seeing him. Do we need to wait for him Byron? They should be promoting him now.
Alright, we will open the meeting back up public at 5:02 PM. You will move on to item number 12. Any action deemed necessary as a result of the executive session, do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, motion to approve compromise of claims as discussed in executive session.
Second. Have a motion in a second, all in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. Moving on to item number 13, consider a resolution authorizing the mayor to purchase approximately .528 acres of land located at zero Patna Drive, 77493, in the amount of $90,000, sourced upon this is the 2018 Series Bonds. Do you have a motion?
Mayor, I'd like to make that motion to approve the purchase of the property discussed at an agreed-upon price plus half of the closing costs.
I second that motion.
Alright, we have a motion, is there any discussion? Having none, we'll call for a vote, all in favor, say aye.
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 Alright, we'll move on to item number 14, councilman's reports.
Thank you Mayor, just a quick report, the hospitalizations in the Houston area are the lowest they've been since June 22nd today, that's very encouraging, ask everyone to continue to be vigilant so that we can keep our economy and our city open, it's essential that we continue moving in the right direction, our families and our neighborhoods are depending on it, so I appreciate everyone's help in accomplishing it, I certainly appreciate the city staff and the mayor's office for doing everything they do to keep our city headed in the right direction, so thank you all.
Councilman Carroll, councilwoman Stockton.
Hi, just like to remind everybody about the Relay for Life of Katie this Friday night, so it's the parade downtown, the Luminary Parade off Fourth Street, so it begins at 8:00 PM and just want to remind everyone to line up and take part in that, that's all.
Thank you ma'am, councilman Dowell.
Thank you Mayor, just want to thank everybody for doing a good job, we're moving forward on our flood mitigation plan, so Iceland Terrace, you're up, you're up, and a lot of good things are going to happen there, so be prepared for construction happening in your neighborhood, would also like to say that I had a chance to go over to Peckham Park today, hadn't been there in a long time, and parks really improved quite a bit, a lot of good folks out there enjoying the day, so our city parks, even though that's Harris County, it's in our city, considered a city park and it's being well-used, so get out and enjoy the sunshine, Mayor, that's all I have.
Councilman Harris.
Well, I just want to thank Brenda Martin for being a tireless advocate for Relay for Life, I love it, I always know when it's time, she'll give each of us a call, a little special reminder to be there and be on time, and then just to follow up on what councilman Dowell said, happy Parks and Recreation Month, get out there, we're all at home, so get out there with your kids and enjoy some sunshine when it's out, thank you.
Councilwoman Cor.
I don't have a report at this time, thank you.
Alrighty. Our report will be pretty short, I'd just like to thank all the city council, all city staff for everything they're doing to help ease this pandemic, everybody's doing a great job, thank you to the community for what you're doing, we are starting to see some positive results as councilman Carroll said, so keep up the good work, other than that, the Relay for Life is always a big event, I'm a survivor twice, I believe in it, and it is amazing at the things they do to help families. The Ark of Katie, I'm fortunate enough to have been associated with them for over 15 years, I've been on their board, a lot of their committees, and I have never had the pleasure to serve at a finer organization than Ark of Katie, those kids will brighten your day every time you see them, but I'd like to wish everybody a good August coming, hopefully it'll be a transition period where we can all maybe not take a deep breath, but at least breathe a little bit easier, so with that, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody approve? Alright, everybody have a wonderful announcement, this meeting is over at 5:08.
Thanks everyone.
Good evening.
Bye-bye.